This question is directed to all candidates. Do you support a political party and if so, how will that affect your decisions? And have you received any financial support from that party? Ms. Adriani?
I am a registered Democrat. However, I am not one that goes to the Democratic meetings. I also have not received any support from any political organization. I don't believe that politics belongs in the Board of Ed. It should be about children and about doing the best for them with the monies that we are able to collect and balance that as the best that we can to put out the best product for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Yes, thank you. I am also a registered Democrat. I was actually on the town council as a Democrat several years ago. I did not get any money from any political party for this election. I think there is absolutely a break between the Board of Ed and the council. I do not believe politics belongs on the council, I'm sorry, on the board. And I think that the decisions they make, as Ms. Adriani said, is based on what is right for the school, what is right for the students, and those are two separate issues.
Good evening. Political ideology does not belong on the Board of Education. I'm a registered Republican. I'm very conservative, but when it comes down to education, I believe it's the greatest gift we can give to our students. And we need to find a fair balance on how we get this accomplished. But to interject politics and to interject political ideology is not going to work in the educational model that we have. And quite frankly, this needs to stop. The Board of Education has to be nonpartisan. We need to work together as a group. We need to work with all, regardless if you're Democrat or Republican. It's about the children. And if it's not about the children, then I'm not sure why I'm sitting here. So, I do not engage myself with a political party. Yes, I'm Republican, I'm conservative, but I do this because I believe in education and giving the children the right start in life. Thank you.
Well, I think there's hope for the township. The largest party in this town is unaffiliated. The largest number of registered voters are not Democrats and are not Republicans. They are unaffiliated voters. So, that's about as nonpartisan as you can get for this audience. I'm a registered Republican. I was formerly a registered Democrat, so, there you go. I don't think politics has anything or should have anything ever to do with the Board of Education. It is a nonpartisan election, even though it's being held in November now. It is entirely a nonpartisan election. And I've worked with Democrats, I've worked with Republicans, I've worked with anybody who's been on the Board, so I don't think it's really a relevant issue at this point. And I have not received any support for this election campaign.
Good evening. I am a registered Republican. I've been a registered Democrat and a registered independent. I reiterate, my goal here is to focus on my interest, which is my children and yours, the successes of this school and the district as a whole. So, political party has no business here. I've received no financial support, and I don't intend to. Elections are right around the corner. Vote for me. I'm truly independent.
Well, like I said before in my opening statement, we need leaders, not politicians on the Board. I am a registered Republican, I'm proud. I do not vote down party lines. We are here for the tax people, the residents, the children, and the teachers. Remember, it's all about the children. Politics has no business being on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is also directed to all candidates, and we will start with Ms. Alice Foster. Name something that you personally have done to enhance Old Bridge Public Schools.
So, I think one of the things I've done, and I mentioned before, is the Old Bridge Glass Slipper Project. I started it about three years ago. And because I realized the great diversity we have in our town and the population, and it's actually an organization my sister had worked on out in Chicago. And what it does is it helps students who can't afford prom. And over the last three years, it's built, there's so many other volunteers in the town who have helped me in businesses. Now, it's not the educational system, I know, but to see a student's face who can go to prom, who can be as beautiful as everybody else, there's just nothing as rewarding as that. So, that's it. I know it's not education, but I think it made kids equal, and I think that's really important.
Education is very important to me. It's extremely important for our community, and it's an extremely important aspect of everyone's lives. I dedicate a lot of time to the Old Bridge Board of Education as a Board member, but I also give back to the schools. Being a firefighter in South Old Bridge, I participate with the fire official every year, twice a year, to go around to our schools to teach fire prevention education to our children. I'm out there with him, I'm there instructing, showing, helping, and educating our children in fire safety education. And I do that not because I'm a firefighter, but I have a knack of working with kids because I want the school to be an educator. So, I feel the more I can give back to a community, the better everyone is. So, yes, I do participate, not only on the Board of Education, with all the hours I put in, I also, on my free time as a firefighter, go to the schools, the elementary schools in Fire District Three, and teach fire safety. It's very, very admirable. You see the children, how they light up when you talk about safety in their home, and going over all the little things that can make a difference when there's a fire in your home. So, I'm very proud to give back through the fire official's office, District Three, with the education of fire prevention. Thank you.
When I first moved to Old Bridge and my wife and I started a family, the schools were very overcrowded. I moved here in 1974, and we elected to start our children in parochial schools, St. Mary's and South Amboy. As time went on, we moved them over, starting at the middle school level, my Tucsonson and my daughter, into cheesequake school. And I immediately, as a parent, I was involved in the PTA, and I felt there were a lot of inequities in the way services were distributed in our school compared to other schools. So, I became active as a citizen, going to Board meetings. And there was a long-range planning committee which had been set up by the existing Board at that time, and this is back in the mid-eighties. And they disbanded it at the end of the year, they had made a minor readjustment. So, a group of us lobbied successfully to get the majority of the Board at that time to create a permanent long-range planning committee, which consisted of a PTA representative and a PTA alternate representative with voting rights. And that committee evolved into a very group where, it came from a group of people who came as individual people trying to protect the turf of their school, and evolved over a short period of time, within a year or two, to a cohesive group that laid down the things that we would require for the, ultimately, for the long-range plan leading up to the referendum. And I believe we also had the responsibility of monitoring the demographics and how things were changing with all of the housing, which is one of the things that I was able to contribute, a skill set that I have, having been on the planning Board. And because of those things, we never suffered from the serious overcrowding that blue urban districts around us did, such as East Bronzer, where kids were having lunch in the halls. We never suffered through that, because we always knew where we were and where we were going. Ultimately, that developed into the referendum, which passed successfully, was built, came in under budget, and was built, was completed early. And we have never suffered the kind of overcrowding that many districts around us suffered during that period of time. Now, things change, we're in a period of decline, and we need to monitor those things, and I think that's a skill set I also can be useful to the Board going forward.
Unfortunately, I believe the context of the question seems to have an advantage of sitting members or past members. However, as far as I see it, some of the feathers and the caps of sitting members truly belong back on the chicken that came off of. As a parent of a special needs student, I've worked closely with my child's study team and my child's teachers, and I haven't had the opportunity to do it on a large scale, but when this Board, a couple of members of these Boards, decided to approve a Director of Special Services without any experience whatsoever, I went and I spoke with some other special needs parents, and I got the same feeling that maybe I wasn't wrong, maybe there was a need for concern, and I came to that meeting, I voiced my opinion, and even though it fell on deaf ears, I still feel like I was an advocate for something I believed in. So, I don't have a problem with standing up and being that advocate. Whether it's from that podium or from this seat, I'll continue to be that advocate. Thank you.
After driving around town, I've noticed a couple of schools have the drop-off zones in front of their schools. I noticed that my children's schools in Grissom, Saywood South, never had any. So, after I made contact with Richard Green, our Councilman, and the Township, I was instrumental in getting the zones painted and signed within a few days. I'm also currently talking to the Township about snow removal around town, near schools. I see it as a huge safety hazard with the amount of snow that we get and how it builds up along the sides of the curbs. The roads get narrowed with all the cars parked on it, and the kids have to either walk on the street or walk over the mounds of snow to get to the sidewalks if they're shoveled. I'm currently trying to get the Town Council to assist in the snow removal around the schools, three houses closest from the school, back and forth, all around the area of the schools. I think that would enhance the safety of our kids.
Thank you.
Donna. Hi. On a small scale, I would have to say that I chaperoned countless numbers of fun nights, dances, as I'm sure that most of the other people on the panel who were parents have done. With my road-to-college expertise, for the years that my son was in school, graduation years '09, '10, '11, I used to run free seminars for the parents for college awareness, helping them get on the right track, how to find a school. And you can go to a private company and pay anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500 for that service. So, I did that free for anybody who asked, for, I don't know, probably 100 or so students over the course of those three years. I have a background in curriculum and instruction, and I've been on the Curriculum Committee and have been that chairperson for quite a while. And I do sit, even though it's not the Board's job to be in the managerial position, but I do read the curriculum guides, and we do sit and chat about some of the things. And I question, if anybody's ever been to those meetings, you know that I question insensibly about programs and the benefits to the children and the cost factors. As far as the schools themselves individually, again, some of them have beautification projects that have been done by Eagle Scouts. From the years 2010 to 2014, from my troop alone, we have 31 Eagle Scouts that graduated from Old Bridge High School. And many of them have passed through me in terms of rank advancement, working on projects, working on their applications, and they've become successful members of society as they've moved on. And I'd like to think that I have a little small part in that. And that may not be about the school, but it is about the character and the civics of the children in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. This question again is directed to all candidates. Congratulations. It's November 5th, you've just won a seat on the Board of Education. Now, what do you do? You're not officially sworn in until January 2015. And we're going to start with Kelly. No. But, Rich, sorry.
The question's a good one. I'm a sitting Board member, so I'll be doing my fiduciary and my responsibilities as a Board member up until the day I'm sworn in again, come January. So, I would continue with my regular course of business. And I hope that if a candidate does get elected to the Board, that they just stay in the peripheral and be involved, and just watch and listen and learn. But for me, I'm already a sitting Board member, so the question really doesn't apply. Thank you.
First task is to take down those god-awful signs, which I'm sure everyone in town will appreciate. But as Mr. Dunn said, I would be returning as a, if I'm elected, I would be returning as a sitting Board member, and I would continue to participate. And if I should not be elected, I will complete my term with dignity.
During that time, I would reach out to the sitting Board members, some that I consider a little bit better than acquaintance, and hope to gain some insight, some knowledge, and some guidance. I'm not going to pretend that I'm going to have all the answers, so I'm going to use that time to gain as much information and experience as I can, so that when I hit that Board, I hit the ground running. I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I'm something I'm not. All I know is, I can provide a service to this community, and I'm gonna, and hopefully the sitting Board members will be courteous enough to extend that olive branch.
I would get my feet wet by meeting with all the top administrators in the Board and the school Board, past and present, listen to any of the issues that I might not have been privy to. I'll meet with all the principals. I think there's a lot of issues with a lot of the principals that they could be moved around. Just meet with people and learn a lot of stuff really quickly. Thank you.
The election is in November. I'm not a fan of that particular move, because the newly-elected Board members do not take their seat until January. By the time the first week in January rolls around, school year is halfway through. You're looking at moving right on into midterms. And to me, I think it's a disruption in the school calendar, but I had nothing to do with the mandates from, and the choices of moving it. If I could have moved it, I would have chosen to do that in June, so at least any reorganization could have been done over the summer. With that said, as a sitting Board member, it's business as usual. We are, again, at that point, starting to put out information to the schools, for the schools themselves to create their school budgets and bring them back in, because once February rolls around, we're ready for budget time. Meetings were starting. This year, we're now trying to have finance meetings much earlier than just when it comes to, closer to budget time, and somebody who's not up for election is going to be in charge of that. If I'm not elected, as with Mr. Weber, I will sit with dignity and welcome the new people, and I will do whatever I can to help them get acclimated to some of the information that they need. They are not at that point sworn in, so it's not, they cannot actually go into closed session or executive session, but with that said, we will certainly try to make a smooth transition. Thank you.
So, if I am fortunate enough to get elected, on November 5th, I think I will just continue to learn about the Board, especially some of the nuances that are associated with the Board. I'll continue to go to meetings, especially the agenda meetings, because I think there's some more detail that goes on in those meetings to learn about what is coming up to the Board. I have to say, though, I think, as I get older, two months seems long, but it flies by, so it really won't give a lot of time to do a lot. I would like to reach out to some more of the elementary school PTAs, just since I've been away from the elementary school for a few years, to get a feel of what's going on. But I think it's just starting to understand all the complexities of the district.
Thank you. Okay, this question is for Mr. Weber. You have run for Town Council and the Board of Education. What motivates you to continue to run for an office?
I think that the passion that drove me to run for the Board of Education in the first place has not subsided, and I think there's still work that's undone, and I think I can make a contribution. We're going through a period of time where we've lost significant enrollment over the last five years. We had a professional demographer come in, and that trend is going to continue over the next five years. Basically, the state only lets you project five years out. We have a building infrastructure that's all going to come due about the same time for replacement, and I think there's a lot of careful planning that needs to be done, and it's a skill set that I've demonstrated before with the referendum, and I think I can make a positive contribution to that process. And that's why I'm running and want to return to the Board.
Thank you. This question is directed toward every candidate. Is there any situation that would make you ineligible to vote as a Board of Education member, and please explain why? And we're starting with Mr. Weber.
I'm eligible to vote for all items, but I choose not to vote for the, on the bill list for the Municipal Utilities Authority, which I serve on, although I can, according to attorney, vote for it. But every other issue, negotiations, hiring a superintendent, evaluating a superintendent, any closed session, I have access to all those, and I can vote on every item. I have no conflicts, either by state standards or perceived. Thank you.
I also will be able to vote on all topics. I do not have any conflict of interest and will never have any, because in my opinion, it's unethical to have them.
At this time, I have no conflicts. I did, as a teacher, I was not allowed to be on the teachers' negotiation or even be in on any of those talks, however, I was able to vote on it. But since I've retired, that is no longer an issue, so I have absolutely no conflicts whatsoever.
I have no issues, or conflicts. Oh, maybe that's not true. But I have no conflict that would prevent me from voting on any issues.
This question was directed at Rich Dunn. Every year, it comes up when I'm up for reelection or for election, and quite frankly, there's no merit to it. It's not unethical, as Mr. Goff was saying. I work very hard for the school district. I do my due diligence. I work extremely hard for the children. Yes, I am conflicted in some of the votes, because my wife is an educator here in Old Bridge, which I'm very proud of her. She's a first-grade teacher over at Cooper Elementary School. She's been in this district for six years. I was only elected to the Board three years ago. She was already an employee here in District. So, this concerted effort to try to nail Rich Dunn that I'm not a good Board member because I can't vote on everything is disingenuous, and quite frankly, I'm appalled that this question's even coming up again. But quite honestly, I understand it's politics, and I'm going to go with the flow. But I'm a very smart individual. I do what's right for the children, I do what's right for the school district, and my love is in this town. My fondest of this town is unflattering. Being a firefighter here in town and serving on the Old Bridge Board of Ed, this is my life. These two endeavors is Rich Dunn's life. So, yes, I can't vote on the superintendent's contract, I can't vote on my wife's contract for the OBEA, and there's a few other little things that I can't vote on, but I can vote on 97% of the things, and quite frankly, I take that responsibility seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, to all candidates. Part of the Old Bridge School's mission statement reads, "Old Bridge Public Schools empowers each student to learn, achieve, success." Give a specific example of this, and we're starting with Mr. Polino.
I apologize. Can you say it a little louder, please?
Certainly. Part of the Old Bridge School mission statement reads, "Old Bridge Public Schools empower each student to learn, achieve, success," et cetera. Give a specific example of this.
I actually like this question quite. It hits home. One of the reasons why I came to Old Bridge was because my wife and I were seeking a District that had a special needs program that would be better than some of the abhorrent ones that we've come across. We found that in Dr. Cooper, and one of the first encounters that we had was with Mr. Raymond Payton. And if he was here, he'd attest to the fact that the child that he had back in Southwood is not the same ninth grader you see today. So, this district, this special needs team, did an outstanding job with him. And personally, I thank them, and I really look forward to working with them and improving. And, thank you.
I think when the teachers can motivate a child who's 18-years-old to give him enough knowledge and guidance to have him run for the Board of Education, as we did last year in Jeffrey Dinoff, shows wonders for the teachers. That empowers the students. That's a perfect example of a child in Old Bridge going for big things. Thank you.
Two minutes is not enough for me for this question. As I said in my introductory speech, I have a lot of background knowledge on multiple intelligence and thematic learnings and learning styles, individually modalities, and I am very, very proud that the Old Bridge School System, the Old Bridge High School, still has the rating of being a comprehensive high school. We are one of the few in the state that are such. We do not send our children to the vocational school. They can choose to go for a variety of programs. But in this school, at the high school, we have automotive, we have cosmetology, we have culinary, we have woodshop, we have auto shop. All of those have a career path. Not only have students over the last couple of years, and each one of them won accolades and awards, and have won money to that, came back to the school for equipment and things in the classroom. But every child has to have the opportunity to learn, and we all learn differently, all of us. We talk about empowering students. Some students don't want to come to school. We need to give them a reason to be here, and if that's because they go to the woodshop where they can be successful, then we need to use that to keep that child in the program. Those are only one of the examples that we have. But I guess my time is up.
Okay, I will also try to keep it to two minutes. And I think when you look at the totality of how our schools are organized, it just helps the child along the way. So, when we started our middle school, where we still have these neighborhood schools, when you look at a lot of places in New Jersey, they don't. So, they start these kids, and they get to feel comfortable, because they, with the same kids for five years, they feel like they can get out and do things that maybe they wouldn't be able to do. And I can tell you, I still see teachers that had my children, who still remember my children, still ask about them. And then, you know, you go into our middle schools, which can be a little daunting, going from your safe little community school, but the teachers there, again, where you start getting into diverse programs, to get to more arts, to get into more of the fine arts programs, there's something for every child. Then that's when you can also start working with children who might not want to go to school. I have two children. They really were born of the same parents, grew up in the same place. I sometimes want to do DNA testing, but, and, you know, they have different needs. And there are people in the school who will work individually with students, so I think that's extremely important. And then you go to this high school that can be overwhelming, and I will say one thing and share a kind of story around this. When I was getting ready to send my children to the high school, I was a little nervous. I went to a very small high school growing up, and that's what I was used to, and I thought that was what you needed. But the advice I got from parents is the same advice I give people today, is if you are involved with your child, if you know what you're doing, they will shine. So, the high school certainly gives that opportunity. And so, I will just do one more quick story, that my son was in an accident several years ago, and I cannot tell you the number of teachers who reached out, who called, both from my daughter's school and from the high school. So, it's those kind of things that allow children to succeed.
Fair and equitable opportunity. That's what we strive for here in Olbridge. As many of you know, my daughter is a special needs child. She came into this district when she was three-years-old, and she wasn't talking one word. She went to carpenter school, to the pre-K program, and that program did wonders. Barbara cut off and the entire special needs program and the special services did a wonderful job. They brought my daughter up to a point now where she's a sophomore, and she's excelling in her academics. That's what this town is about. We treat everyone fairly and equally, and that's what makes Olbridge great. We have six Title I schools. Do we all know what Title I school means? They don't meet a certain socioeconomic position. So we have six of our 12 elementary schools that are Title I. And we took the necessary steps, this past board, two to three years ago to bring back the counselors into each elementary school. That was because we understood the issues, we understood the concerns, and that we needed the extra help. So we recognized that we need to treat everyone fairly and equitably, and we've done that. And I'm very proud to be part of that, and I voted yes for the counselors, and they've made an incredible difference. We have all these wonderful schools of character. We have state schools of character, national schools of character. That's speaking volumes about how we're treating everyone equally. And I'm proud to say that my daughter and my children are in Olbridge Public Schools, and the world's the limit. The sky's the limit for these kids, because we care and we invest the resources necessary to get them on track. Thank you.
I think one of the unique gifts that my children have gotten from the system is the exposure to cultural diversity that I didn't grow up with. We have a town that's about three-quarters of homeowners and about one-quarter of renters, and we have a very diverse cultural community. We have a comprehensive high school. We have proportionally one of the largest special ed programs in the state. And I think, quite frankly, many districts do what they can to keep their special ed populations down. Olbridge is not one of them. They've got an extraordinary program. They provide those kind of services that it does attract people. But between the cultural diversity and the comprehensive nature of the district and being able to deliver some level of service to all the children who attend our district, I'm proud to have been on the Board for these many years. It's a good place to go to school.
Thank you. Before I ask the next question, before I ask the next question, I just wanted to let you all know that that beep is only after one minute. So when you hear the beep, you have another minute.
I have another 30 seconds.
No. Again, this question is to all the candidates. With the implementation of the new full-day kindergarten this year, do you think there needs to be any adjustments or modifications, such as additional lunch aids or PAREs? We're going to start with George.
The class sizes are, I think, about an average of 23 or 24 per student. That's very large for kindergarten. It's above the state average. We definitely have to look forward to see how we can correct that and not have so many children bused. I think there's over 120 children being bused just for kindergarten alone. That speaks volumes on how this was put together. I think maybe it should have been put together a little more slowly, diligently. And of course, the cost. I stated before, it was originally stated as $700,000. It's $1.4 million, guys. Thank you.
Yes? Okay. The full-day kindergarten came with a cost. The number of teachers that we needed is not as extreme as what some people lead you to believe. We already had half of them in place, because we had a one-session kindergarten. None of those children had lunch in the district. Do we need more lunch aids? Little children that are five-years-old need help. So yes, we needed additional lunch aids. As far as PAREs, that's a question that's very difficult to answer, because that depends on whether or not the children need services, and that we don't know ahead of time. So we don't know that until after the children apply, after the parents have put in their paperwork, and whether or not the children are deemed to have a classification. Not every child gets a PARE. Some get a one-on-one aid. Some, we need a PARE in the classroom. That is one of those unknowns about education that comes every year. As children's IEP changes, we may have to add or reduce the numbers of PAREs, or at least reallocate to where they are. So the answer to that is, yes, we needed both. But just so that you know, we saved approximately $250,000 on busing, because all of the midday bus routes were cut out. So we coalesced some classes, we collapsed some classes, we moved a variety of teachers around. They were offered the opportunity to apply to be a kindergarten teacher, even if they were in fifth grade or third grade. Some of them did. Some of those teachers were not replaced. And I believe that some of the numbers that are being brought out today are a little high. Thank you.
So I don't know the details on that. So unless I have the data in front of me to say what the current statistics are, I don't think I can speak on that. What I will say, though, is with any major project or anything to the nature of size of something like this, you execute it, but as you execute it, you monitor it. So especially something brand-new like this, it should be monitored. I'm going to make an assumption that the administration is clearly and closely watching what's going on, because that's how you determine what kind of changes and improvements that you make. You have to put it out there, you have to test it, you have to live it, and then you find out, what do you need to change? Some stuff, maybe you change midstream, because it's important to do. Other things, you need to wait and see, because we are talking about children. You can't set an expectation that a child is going to do this, and everybody is going to learn this way, and you never have to make a change. So I think the ability to be flexible, to be able to monitor as it goes along, and then from that, how do you change going forward to continue to improve is what you need to do.
Firstly, I want to say that the full-day kindergarten has been a resounding success in the district. Last year, we had 298 students. We have 623 students. So we gained almost 340 students in one year. And that's reversing a lot of the trends that Frank Weber has discussed. And yes, we were losing enrollment, but with the full-day kindergarten implementation, that's reversed. Every year, if we get another 200 students, 300 students, we're going to stabilize our enrollment, which is a great thing. Yes, we put together a full-day kindergarten. We were very thorough. We went through the entire process, and it's a huge success. And just basically, what Ms. Alice Forster said is that we're going to monitor and adjust as necessary. And if we have to add an aid, or if we have to add another PARE to try to lower the class sizes, we will do that. But the educational value of kindergarten has been documented, and it's necessary with today's common core standards. And yes, I was a leader. I was an advocate of kindergarten. I'm proud. And there were members on this Board of Education that told me, "Well, it's going to be my duty to make sure you're not reelected because you supported full-day kindergarten." So honestly, I don't back down. And I supported full-day kindergarten, and we got it done. And it's the best thing for this district, because you know what? It's been a long time coming. Yes, we will monitor it. We will continue to make sure that if there's aids that are needed, or if there's additional PAREs that are needed, we're going to make that revision and make sure the resources are there. Now, there's also another misnomer out there, that it costs us $1.4 million a year. That's a false impression. It costs us $700,000 a year, and the first-year startup cost was an additional $500,000, so we can buy the tables, the chairs, the iPads, all the wonderful things that go into a full-day kindergarten session. So yes, the amount was $1.2 million, and $500,000 was a one-time cost. So let's make sure our facts are correct and out there before we start spilling them out and making sure that everyone thinks that we did something wrong. Thank you.
The facts are important. There were 398 students in the kindergarten. When it went up to 623, 37 of those who were self-contained special needs students. There were 583 students mainstream in the 25 sections across the grade level. Now, the problem is that six of those classes have 25 students, which is the highest level a state will allow before they put a PARE in. So if you think about when the state requires you to put a PARE in, because they're telling you by law that that teacher can't handle 26 students, but they're going to be fined at 25. Problem is not whether you are for or against kindergarten. The problem is the implementation was underestimated, in my opinion. It was done deliberately to keep the number down and make it easier to sell to the public. The fact is, the largest class sizes we have in the elementary school are in kindergarten now. We have six of them at 25. We have seven of them at 24, based on a September 15 enrollment that was given to us by the central administration. That will all change, hopefully, when they move up to the first grade, which has more sections on a grade level, and it has a lower number of students. But traditionally, kindergarten, first, second grade, the plan is, when you can afford to do it, is to try and have those smallest class sizes there. And as the children mature, go to third, fourth, and fifth grade, those averages will tend to go up. At this point, though, they are not in that order. And again, I think it was understated, and I think it was done deliberately, so that the public would think it's a smaller number than it is. It's not a question about whether you're for or against kindergarten. The other thing I thought, as a Board member, when we're going to encumber what ultimately grow to a $2 million a year expense, when all of these teachers get up to the top of the guide, and the various insundry things that need to support all of them, including potentially building some new classrooms, because we're short classrooms for kindergarten as well. I think that's a decision that the public should have had an opportunity to opine on with the referendum, because you're encumbering everyone in the district for that $2 million expense, plus inflation, in perpetuity, because it's never going to go away. The other issue is, some 69 children are being bused to other schools, because there was not, under this plan, there was not enough room to accommodate them in the school that should have been their neighborhood school. And that's an extraordinarily high number.
I don't have the raw data to talk about the success of the program just yet. But what I can tell you, just listening to some of the information just shared recently by the other candidates, is it doesn't seem like it was completely well-thought-out. To say that it's hard to forecast when full-day kindergarten is not a new concept. I was in full-day kindergarten many years ago. It's not a new concept. It can be forecasted, and I just don't think the diligence was put into it in order to come up with an adequate plan. Being a student of an all-day kindergarten, I'm not against it. And being a parent, believe me, I'm for it. You know, I wish it was available when my son was going through kindergarten. But with that said, you can't put a burden on the taxpayers on a whim, on a chance to just push something out there. You need to do the diligence. You need to do the legwork. You need to look at other districts. You know, yes, we are different, but we're not paving a new road. We need to learn from successes and anticipate failures. And I don't think that the Board members that made the decision to move forward did so with full information. Thank you.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Goff. You stated the kindergarten program went from $700,000 to $1.4 million. Where did you acquire this information?
It's all available on public records.
This question is for all candidates, and we are going to start with Donna Andriani. With social media being a viable campaign tool, would you consider using it, and if so, how?
I'm sorry, Jill. I didn't get that whole question. Could you repeat that?
With social media being a viable campaign tool, would you consider using it, and if so, how?
Interesting question for me, because I'm probably the only one that does not have a Facebook page or social media. I've had personal experience with identity theft. Makes me extremely cautious about putting anything out there. And I know that may sound a little off to some of you who have Facebook announcements every three seconds coming through on your phone, but it makes me uncomfortable. There are a lot of ways in which we have the means and the median to communicate, and it does not have to be through social media. With that said, I think it's an excellent resource. And anybody running for office, and anybody that's looking for publicity in any way, shape, or form, this is another way to get you a message and get your information out there. I've now retired. I'm starting to think about doing it, but I'm still on the hesitant page. But I do have an email address. People have my phone number. I get emails and phone calls all the time. Social media, for me, is a great concept. I can't use it.
Yeah, I do use social media. So, and I use it, you know, I started because of my kids. You know, could they get Facebook? Yes, as long as you friend me, and I'm your first friend. So it is very handy. And, you know, I use email quite frequently. I use, we use closed groups for our Girl Scouts, because that's how we can get ahold of the kids. I found out kids don't use email, so if I send them a note, they're not going to see that. But if I put something on Facebook to our closed group, they'll see it. So I think using the social media in the right way is good. I think, you know, that's something, too, we need to train our kids on, on how to use it appropriately. But it's a great way to reach out to people and to connect. And you get to connect a lot of people who you maybe don't get a chance to see one-on-one. So, yeah.
Social media is a fabulous vehicle to get your message out, and Facebook is that vehicle. And one thing I've learned is that Olbridge is a huge place. And growing up on Staten Island, I've come to realize that a good number of my graduating class from New Dorpe High School is in Olbridge, New Jersey, and I found out through Facebook. I believe George Guff down at the end is from New Dorpe High School. I know that Kevin Borsili is from New Dorpe High School. I know that Frank Weber is from New Dorpe High School. Wow, all these transplanted Staten Islanders. And I found out a lot of that through Facebook. But Facebook and social media is an excellent resource to get your message out, and I utilize it continuously, because I feel it's important that people know what you're all about. You say things inadvertently sometimes, or you say things candidly. That's who you are. And people get a better understanding of the quality of your character based upon what you post on Facebook. So I'm always out on Facebook. You know, whenever I'm on the fire truck sometimes, or when I'm at the Board of Ed, or when I'm at work, it's a great resource, and I do use it for my campaign. And if you want to go look at my Facebook page, you're more than welcome to. It's reelection Richard Dunn for the Olbridge Board of Education. Thank you.
So it's not whether you have an R or D after your name. The problem here is we have too many people from New Dorpe High School. In any event, social media is a wonderful thing. If you, again, with respect to Donna, I share a lot of her common opinions about the security issues with it. I'm the Vice President of Operations and Member Services for a company that tests about 50,000 applicants in 100 countries around the world at about 90 different test sites twice a year. And we have a Facebook page, and it's live by the sword, die by the sword, in some cases. It's got to be very carefully monitored. It's got to be done well. It has to be accurate. And things can get said in a very quick way sometimes that will come back to bite you. I'm going to use that, but in a very limited way. I would rather, I have a website which I will post information on and give people access to if they want to know anything. And I have ways to be contacted if they choose to contact me with any specific questions. Thank you.
I'm a technologist, so it'd be sacrilege for me to say anything bad about social media. I use it. I use it well. I use it better than most. My wife considers me a cyborg half the time. There's a technology on me at pretty much every point of the day. However, it's a tool, and it's no exception for a handshake, a smile, an eye contact. And although I have a Facebook page, if someone hits on my Facebook page, first thing I do is I reach out to them. It's only there as a tool. The human contact is what we lose with some of that. And that's one thing that I try not to do. And that's one thing that I try not to do. So if anyone wants to get in contact with me, feel free to like my page. Just search Ramon Paulino. But I'll come to you. Thank you.
I once again have to give kudos to New Dorp High School. Four people that could possibly be on one Board of Education in the state of New Jersey. I think that has to be a record. I hope and pray that with the guidance of our teachers from our schools, that they can produce the same product in another township somewhere across the country. I love Facebook. My wife hates it. I use it as a great way to keep in contact with family and friends across the country. I love walking, you know, knocking on doors, meeting people at township events, but it's a great way to meet other people. You have to be fun, you know, sharing information. I don't like anything negative on there. It's a great way to get your message out.
Again, for all candidates, do you think there should be a plan to adjust or modify the schools to enable kindergartners to go to their home school? And why or why not? And we will begin with Kelly.
Thanks. Well, of course, should be a plan. But I think it really is depending on multiple factors. Where are the classroom space? We would love to keep every child in their home district, but if that means building, expanding the building, that's a cost. So what you have to do is weigh all the various costs in there. So that's one thing to consider. I think everybody does want to stay in their home school as much as they can. Nobody wants to be moved out. So I think as part of the analysis they have to do this year is where are the students coming from? Maybe try to get early registration if possible. We know people move in all year round, so you can't always do that. But you have to do the analysis of where is the buildings? And the cost of building, adding to a building is more than the cost of a bus. So you have to figure out really which is going to be the most advantageous, especially if there's going to be room for them in first grade going forward. If it's for this one year, it is some of those things you have to weigh when you look at issues like this, of which will make the best sense, both economically, but also be less disruptive for the child.
I am very pleased that the community schooling ideal is being discussed again. And that's what's so refreshing about Old Bridge. Yes, some of the kids need to be bused due to overflow issues. Some of our schools weren't large enough to have two sections of kindergarten, so we had to overflow to the next nearest school. For instance, over in Cliffwood Beach, Lawrence Harbor Memorial School took the overflow from Cooper because Cooper only has room for one classroom for kindergarten that met the requisites based upon the state standards. So we overflow kids who were supposed to go to Cooper to Memorial. Hopefully, once they get to the first grade, they'll come back into their home school. Same thing has occurred at Grissom School. There's one section there, I believe, and they could overflow to Sharar and Carpenter and Shepherd. But it's still the community school. It's still within one mile of each other. And that's what's important, is that we still have the community schooling ideal in place, even though you're getting overflowed. It's not like we're taking a kindergarten student from Madison Park and sending them to McDivitt. We're not doing that. We're sending them to the next closest school. And in these two circumstances, the closest school, Grissom to Carpenter, is three-quarters a mile, and Cooper to Memorial is three-quarters a mile. So I think we did our due diligence. We did what we had to do to make this happen. It was more important for us to get it in place at this point than worry about where we're going to be sending the kids. We got it done. It's in place. We did our due diligence, and it's a fabulous program. Thank you.
Overflow has been used as a concept through the years when there were no other choices. This is before the referendum, particularly when we, before we added additional classroom spaces and we had almost 10,000 students in the district. We're down below 9,000 at this point. The kind of problems that happen with overflowing, though, is if your first child should have gone to Cooper and winds up going to Memorial, he or she makes friends, and now they decide they want to stay in the school, which the district offers them as an option for the remaining five years in the elementary school. Then what happens when you have a sibling who comes up two years later and there's room for them in Cooper? Now do you split them between two schools and two buses? So it brings its share of problems for people to make decisions on. And it adds an expense that can go on for six years because you've overflowed a child now. When you, if you had been better prepared, it might not have been 69 students. It may have only been 25 or 30. So I think there needs to be a hard look taken at what the projected kindergarten population will go, and if there's those places that require adding an additional kindergarten classroom. Now, that's not a cheap process. A state-of-the-art kindergarten classroom can cost $600,000. So, but the only way you're going to get class sizes down is to have more rooms to put students in. You really don't have room with the current generation of students that you had this year and you will have next year unless you do something that, to change the physical structure, you will continue to be stuck in this quagmire of sending kids out and having class sizes which are larger than you really want to have.
The foundation of a community school is exactly that, a community. How do you look at your child who has spent the last four, five years making friends in his community and then tell him he can't go to one of the biggest events in his life with the rest of his friends? So it's a double-edged sword, and believe me, I don't take it lightly, and I don't place any judgment on the sitting board that made the decision to do so. But we have to take that into consideration, the impact. Now, we take a child and displace them from his friends that he knows and he grows up with and he would play around the corner with and introduce him to a new environment. The impact on that child, he may not have the social ineptness to make friends as quickly as you would think or you would hope. So I take the exception to that more so than anything. I also want to, you know, I wish it didn't come up, but I have to point out the fact that in my last, in one of my previous arguments, I made the mention that the board rushed it. And with the statement made, "It's more important to get it in place than to worry about placement," that just proves what I said. It's not more important to get it in place. It's more important to get it right. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's never going to be a perfect situation with parents. Everyone wants their children to go to the closest school possible. I have to agree with Mr. Dunn that it's not perfect, but I think the board has done a very good job with it. It's always going to be a moving situation. You're going to have to be changing with the amount of students that are going to the schools and the amount of students in towns, in town areas. It's just a very tough situation. I went to school on Staten Island. I walk blocks away. I don't understand why parents are so upset that their kids have to be driven or bused to a school a couple of blocks away from the house. But I think that the board has done a good job with that.
Full-day kindergarten is a resounding success. We have more students than we had planned for. Now, while Mr. Paulino would say that we didn't plan and did not do our diligence, I have to take exception to that. We have been talking about full-day kindergarten on the board for the six years that I've been on it and probably prior to that. It always seemed to be an extremely expensive proposition, millions and millions, way over what we expended at this point. We were able to put in full-day kindergarten because our enrollment did go down. We were able to do it because we had a variety of other options where it was not a huge cost expenditure. Not saying it wasn't expensive, but it certainly wasn't in the millions that had been projected years before. I think we're all in agreement that we like community schools. We expected X number of students and X plus 100 registered. That has nothing to do with poor planning. How do you plan for an exact number when those students have not been in school yet? So we followed the demographics. We did our diligence. We did such a great job, we have too many children. Unfortunately, we need more room. And every person on this panel has made a comment about that. Do you want to bear the expense of adding additions to the neighborhood schools? That's a taxpayer issue. It's a community issue. If enrollment continues to go down, we don't need the additions. If the enrollment now becomes consistent, then we do need the additions. This is a five-year plan out. We talk about it all the time on the board. It's not something that was put in on a whim or on a rash notice. It was planned. We did a great job. It's always being monitored. It's always under revision, and we certainly want to accommodate every child at the closest school possible. Thank you.
Another question for all candidates. In the past, the Board of Education considered cutting the budget by privatizing or outsourcing some special education services. Would you vote to cut the budget by outsourcing any special education services? And we're going to start with Rich Dunn.
When you outsource special education services, you're going to be paying a lot more money than you do keeping in district. And that's one of my big platforms because I am so involved with SEPTA, Allison Voss, Wendy, everyone. And I understand what the school district needs. We need to bring the kids back. We spend over $5 million a year sending kids out of district to specialized schools. We have the educational enrichment program that wants to benefit all children, and we have to also benefit the children who get shipped out to different schools. Now, how do we do that? We have to have specialized facilities. We need to have specialized teachers. We need to have specialized programs. And we can do that. And that's something that the Board of Education is looking into. The Director of Special Services and his team are looking at bringing more kids back into the district. $5 million a year just for tuition is a lot of money. Those kids deserve the very best. My daughter's a special needs kid, and I would never deprive one of anything. But if we can do it in district and do it cheaper, we can do it, and plus, we have the resource for other children. So to your point, when we outsource for special needs, it costs us more than if we do it ourselves. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, Jill?
In the past, the Board of Education considered cutting the budget by privatizing or outsourcing some special education services. Would you vote to cut the budget by outsourcing any special education services?
All right. Every budget, every year, is a unique experience. About 35% of the money that we get to fund this district comes from the state. And it's always fingernail-biting time as to how much state aid you're going to get. If you remember, three or four years back, we had a massive cut in state aid that required a lot of changes and a lot of things to be considered. So what I've learned to do is never say never. I would not, certainly, we, this board, and I think all of the boards that I've served on before that, have all taken a unified approach that as many special needs students as they can bring back in the district is what our goal and objective is to do. We save money. It keeps the child closer to the parents because a lot of out-of-district placements may be overnight. Kids don't have to travel as far. We don't have to pay the transportation. So that would be insanity. There'd be no reason to ever attempt that. I think the thing that, there are places that the board has talked about in years past, you could consider privatizing some of the in-service things that you do, such as the child study teams or things of that nature. Not saying that's going to happen. We have not, again, everything's driven by budget, just like there was talk one year of laying off powers and privatizing powers because we were in such severe financial straits. Whenever possible, and we don't have to go outside, and we can afford the benefit of having our people in our schools with our students, I would be for it.
My answer's simple. No. I've seen the great works of our special needs program. There's no way I would allow that to go out of district. I know it's hard to say not knowing budget constraints. I've been a financial guy before. I understand money in dollars and cents. But we do it, and we do it well. And there's no need for us to send our children out like at the rate that some of these other districts do. Our program can be sustained with the right leadership, and we should be a beacon to some of the other districts.
I think when you outsource anything, you're going to bring on a huge cost, extra cost, to our taxpayers. If you stop having overspent and overdesigned projects, you might be able to have the tools and resources to accomplish this in town. That's it.
Unfortunately, the statement as given is false. There is no way that you can cut budget by outsourcing. So if we want to go, would I cut the budget on the backs of special needs children? Absolutely not. What I can tell you is that it costs more in every district to educate a special needs child, maybe $4,000 to $5,000 more per child. If we look at a ballpark of $20,000 to $22,000 per child, if they're in Old Bridge, the tuition alone for any of the children that are being put out to a more specialized school because of the need of that child, we are looking at a minimum of $30,000 per child, up to $95,000 a year tuition per child. Now, that's not every child. Those are unique situations. But the cost is really prohibitive. However, we need to put our children, our special needs children, where they will get the best opportunity for learning and for social growth. That price tag did not include the bus. That price tag did not include the driver with an aide because a lot of those children need a one-on-one aide. So it's extremely cost-prohibitive to send out the children. And as a unified approach, the board has always brought back and tried to educate as many of our special needs students as possible. Besides the cost factor, everybody up here has been talking about community schools. We want our children to socialize with the friends in their own neighborhood when possible. So we would certainly not do that. I can't say that for everybody else, but for me, I certainly would not do that.
So I really agree with everyone here because of a lot of the points and the data that was mentioned. But what I would want to, I would say, and to be honest, I don't know a lot of the details as Mrs. Andriani was talking about that backs that up. What I think is important is when there's a debate around a topic like this, it deserves the discussion. So if you don't have the discussion, you can't understand the pros, the cons, the expenses, why you make a decision. So I would certainly not be for it based on the data and the information I have, but I think as board members, we need to understand everything. So that way also, everyone in the public understands why the decision was made. So I think, you know, we say at work sometimes when you're debating issues, it's not a bad idea. There's no such thing as a bad idea. You bring up the idea, you discuss it, and then you decide whether you move forward, don't you? What do you do? But it's always more beneficial to talk about it and then decide not to do it. Or do it.
Again, this question is for all candidates. How do you feel about the new response to intervention program? Do you feel there is a need for additional staffing to properly implement this program? And we're going to begin with Frank Weber.
I would say that at this point, as far as the staffing goes, I would go with whatever the, at least I would review what the administration recommendation would be. I think the fact that you've got an intervention program is a positive thing. And since it's a new program, I think you've got to give it a prototype period and make a determination, is it effective at the level out of staff, or does it require additional staffing? Are the results there?
I echo the fact. Intervention is definitely key to most incidents, but I don't have enough data to know the successes of the program. I believe a successful pilot program would be the key, and once it's been researched, I'll be able to make a better decision.
And once it's been researched, I'll be able to make a better decision.
I have a lot of family members who do have addiction problems. So, I think any type of program like this is an extreme benefit to the community. Unfortunately, I really don't have enough information for it, but I think it's a great asset that we're doing, and it could only help, it can't hurt at all.
As I mentioned earlier, all children learn in a different way. All children learn at different speeds. We need to take into account, whether you're five, six, or seven years old, that every day, our children are bombarded with new facts and new things that they need to learn. Let me put that another way. If you were to get a new cellphone, how long does it take you to find all the doodads? Then you had another new cellphone tomorrow, and you had to figure out more doodads. And then the next day. Some children pick things up very quickly. Maybe everything, maybe just the math, maybe just the consonant blends. Who knows? Some children need more time. What happens is, it becomes rolling thunder, it becomes an avalanche, when the children can't surface because they're constantly feeling as if they are behind. That is one of the reasons we have put in a program such as this RTI, Response to Intervention. We're looking for people who can identify children who need a little extra help now in the foundational grades, so that they don't fall behind or get so embedded in failure that they need to go into a special needs program or have special services. I think the program is wonderful. It's a new year. All indications are that it will be positive and cost-saving for the district.
Yeah, I think this program is a fabulous add to the education. I think, as we said, you know, it's hard to determine whether a kid's quiet and just being quiet, or they're just not getting it. And having that early intervention where you have some one-on-one where we can dedicate this is extremely important. I think, just like the other programs, you know, you have to test them, see what the results are. Can we expand it? Should we expand it? And actually, it kind of loops back to one of the original questions about one of our missions, which is, how do you empower each child to learn? And this is one way you can do it.
The RTI program is a program that's going to be a diagnostic tool. It's going to help develop strategies and coping skills for students who need the extra help. And we're doing it without adding additional staff. So, whatever program or skill or whatever resource we can implement that's not going to cost a taxpayer or anything is going to be a positive. And the RTI program is already working. And the Board of Education as a whole supported the program because we believe that, again, everyone must be treated fair and equitably. Everyone must have a fair chance at success. And if we give the programs and the skills and the knowledge to get the child to be in a position where they can be self-reliant when they become an adult, that's the goal of this board education, and the RTI program is a fabulous start.
Next question, again, to all candidates. What is your understanding of PARC and Common Core standards? Do you believe that our district is ready to begin administering the PARC assessments, and why or why not? We're going to begin with Mr. Polino.
I take one exception to Common Core. Not that it's a bad program, but the fact that Donna alluded to, where every student learns differently. When you institute something and you plan for all students to be treated the same, someone's bound to be left out. So, I don't feel that you can adequately implement. However, I feel our staff and our teachers, I think they're prepared for the challenge. Whether or not it's going to be easy is a different standard. And whether or not we'll be successful, I don't have a doubt on it because I know they'll work for it. But like I said, personally, the Common Core just is not something that I'm behind 100% only because I know the difficulties of raising a child that learns differently.
Common Core, it's something that's kind of been pushed on us nationally. It's something I don't really believe in, just because every child does, like Ron said, learn differently. It's very difficult because we have to get the teachers up and running to abide by all the standards. And it's just not something that really should be beneficial to us, but it has to be. It has to be pushed on us, and we have to do a good job at it.
Everybody out there that's not in education wants to find the perfect way to assess and compare every child to each other. And that's what happens with state testing. Your personal opinion about how you feel about the Common Core is irrelevant. It's something that we have to do. Your personal opinion about the PARC assessment, again, is irrelevant. It's something that we are mandated, that we have to do. The state decided you're putting in this test. The state gave us the parameters. The state gave us the deadlines. The state gave us, the state gave us. What they didn't give us was the money to do it. We had to make it happen. I think that Old Bridge was more prepared than most districts. I know that our technology director, Roseanne Moran, was asked to give presentations outside our district as opposed to our own in-house professional development. We spent a lot of money, one of those things that we have to be flexible about, that we cannot plan for because our budget is already set and all of a sudden, we need to have new servers. When we collect the information from the PARC, does anybody know where it goes? I do. The state doesn't want it unless it's all together. So, if you have five days' worth of testing, you can't send the information to the state. They don't want it. We have to hold it. Well, we had to put in new servers so that we could hold that information. And they, now you have to send it at nighttime. So, there are a lot of things that you all don't understand, that you're not exposed to, all those little things that make it a very complicated program. That's the technical part. That's the nitty-gritty. Now, let's talk about the students being tested, and tested, and tested. We don't have a choice. We're prepared for the PARC. We did a great job trying to get our students ready and get our teachers ready. And we are ahead of the curve by anybody else in our local area.
So, you know, in concept, it is a great idea. The U.S. needs to improve its scores to be competitive. Execution sometimes is lacking. If you're not given the resources to execute it, you're going to have some challenges. So, but, as Mrs. Adriani said, I think we're ready. I think we're prepared. I know there's also alternative testing that's going on around the high school graduation. There is some flexibility I've seen, that it's not reliant solely on PARC. It's also reliant, you could use an SAT score or a portfolio. So, it looks like they are trying to make some accommodations, knowing that this is their first year, and they have no idea what's going to happen. However, just to piggyback on something Mr. Adriani said, is as board members, it is our duty to implement the laws that were given. So, you know, that's where sometimes you have to look at what you need to do, take out any personal bias, and do what's right for the school and for the students.
Unfortunately, with Common Core standards and the PARC, federal funds are tied to these programs. And if we don't follow these programs, you know what? We don't get the funds. So, we need to follow the programs, and I think the district has done an excellent job of preparing ourselves for the PARC exams. Now, people must realize that the PARC is taken on computer, tablets, or laptops. So, it's important that we have our technology infrastructure together and appropriate because this exam is done electronically. That's something which is beyond our control. That was all mandated by the state government and also the federal government. Obviously, it's an unfunded initiative mandate. They won't give us any funds for it. Our funds that we receive for other programs are tied to it, but they don't give us anything else to help us build our infrastructure and the processes. As for the Common Core, unfortunately, that's basically rammed down our throats by the federal government. And people like it, people don't like it. I know my wife, being an educator, I hear all the time how difficult it is always to stay within the parameters of the Common Core because she has to teach differentiated instruction. We all should know what differentiated instruction is. The teacher needs to teach to every child in that classroom regardless of ability. And that's very important to remember because people say, well, teaching is very easy. Teaching is something where you only have to worry about one child or the entire classroom, but as a teacher, you have to teach individually, and it's called differentiated instruction. So, there's still a lot to be done, but unfortunately, with these two items, it's beyond our control. We have to stay with the mandate. We need to make sure we follow it. But I'm confident with the PARC exam. We're ready to go, and I think the administration did a fabulous job.
I think the district is well-prepared, as any of the districts around us, to handle the challenge. But it is a daunting challenge for both teachers and for the community economically because it's not being supported by any state funding. It's another unfunded mandate, as a number of people have said, which is another reason that goes back to, on those things that you do have discretion in your budget, you have to be extremely mindful so that when an unfunded mandate like this comes along, or you need to hire an extra teacher or two to reduce the kindergarten size, especially with differentiated instruction, you need to have your money reserved for those critical educational issues rather than overspending on some of the other projects that we have. But I think the administration has been on top of it, and time will tell. There is a, there is a pretty serious growing movement of strong exception to the Common Core in parts of the country. But like any other process, we'll have to see, it's going to have to have its time period to run, and the state and the federal government will make some assessment if they believe it's been successful.
Again, to all candidates. The board voted for the purchase of 3,000 iPads over a year ago and funded this purchase over a five-year period. This version of the iPad is no longer in production in the first year of the program. Do you think this was a good or bad decision, and why? And we're going to begin with Mr. Goff.
Just like when we go home and buy a computer, within a year or two, that computer's completely obsolete. I think any type of instrument that you're going to purchase is going to be useless in time. I think the bigger mistake was the technology platform that was used on. I know the Chrome was new when it came out. I think that would have been a better choice to use. It was a good way to the students to access the information from at home, which they currently can't do. They can use a username from at home, and it would have been so much easier. Since this is my last question, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I truly enjoyed this. And I'm number six on the ballot. Thank you.
As far as the iPads are concerned, it's one of those other endeavors that we talked about for quite a while. With the PARC looming, we knew it was coming. We knew that we had to get mobile units, technology units, in the classrooms so that they can be moved from place to place. To put in another computer lab, to update a computer lab with desktops, means that the children have to filter in and out, and there's no mobility in allowing all the children to use the technology. In terms of the iPad as the product at the time that they were bought, and not all of them are bought, many of them are lease purchase, they had the largest variety of software that was applicable and usable and user-friendly for not only the students but for the teachers. So, that was one of the largest reasons, or the majority of the reasons, why, my understanding is why we went with the iPads. There was discussion about a variety of different kinds, whether it's the Chrome or whether it was the Kindle or whether it was, but by large majority, the recommendation from our technology department and from our administrators and the principals and teachers was that the software was already in place. It's things that we needed. We had licenses already. We didn't have to go out and buy additional software, and that is why we went with the iPads.
So, you know, we know technology changes every year. So, I think it's something that was, we need to factor in. Now, if I knew every year what Apple specifically was going to chew and change, I would live in a much nicer house probably than I do right now. But it does change. And I think there's a difference between a version differentiation and what can still be done and run on the iPad. So, being a different version does not mean you can't run the same software. You might be able to get an updated software. You can still get onto the Internet, which is, I know, something that the classrooms use a lot. So, even though it's a different version, I don't know you can correlate it with that you cannot use it effectively. So, you know, and as the technology goes into it, when you do the analysis, you know it's going to change. And I think that's why we do have people that that's their expertise, and we, as a board, you need to go to your experts on what's the best product to choose.
The iPad initiative, another wonderful thing that this past Board of Education brought to the school district. iPads are very important. Technology is very important. And that's the wave of the future. And we had the insight to start moving in the right direction. We were ahead of the curve. And we did a great job in trying to establish the product that we were going to use. There was a lot of debate. There was a lot of discussion on if it was right or wrong to utilize the iPad. And ultimately, the iPad prevailed for certain reasons. Obviously, Apple is a very large corporation, and their catalogs of apps is just massive. And we utilize the iPad for a lot of different purposes in this district. And right now, I know that the special education is utilizing iPads to teach children to speak. And we have a child, Enrique, who utilizes his iPad to communicate with his mother and father. So, we decided upon the iPad because of all the ancillary support items that we got from Apple. Yes, it's the iPad 2. It's a little older than the current versions, but as everyone is set up here, technology changes. But it still operates on the ISO 8.20. It's all upgradable, and our team here in the district do a fabulous job in maintaining our technology. At this point, I'm very comfortable with the purchase, and I know we're purchasing more iPads because it is the wave of the future. The goal next is to put all textbooks on iPad. Kids don't utilize books anymore. They utilize technology. And that's why we decided to go with the iPad. Thank you.
I'm supportive of technology. I have been since back in the early '80s when I had an old IBM PS2. I'm not supportive of the iPad because I don't feel it was the best choice. It was twice the price of a Chromebook. Chromebook is accessible from home, from any PC. Students could access the cloud program and work from home on those same kind of systems. Now, unless they've got a Macintosh system or an iPad system at home, which most don't, they cannot access the iPad in the school buildings. It's a much easier system to maintain in terms of that everything's done in the cloud, requires a lot less maintenance expense associated with it. It's a difference in an evaluation of a piece of technology. And I did not support the purchase of the iPad. I felt it was the wrong product. It was twice the price. And quite frankly, it wasn't accessible to students as easily, and it was hard at a service.
I'm the only one of these candidates and the current sitting board members who's actually qualified to speak to this subject. Everybody else is going by hearsay and what they think, and I have 20 years' worth of technology experience to tell you that this was a bad decision. Not that iPads aren't good, not that the program can't be successful. It just can't be successful when you don't plan correctly, which I've been saying all along. Mrs. Adriani said that, well, she alluded to the haste trying to get behind the PARC system. Again, moving, trying to catch up. system. Again, moving, trying to catch up is not the way to plan out any tool. First thing that should have been done was, a pilot program should have been established. A panel of the teachers that will be directly impacted should have been assembled. We should have tested these products more efficiently. I've read Roseanne's technology report, and the survey says that the teachers, more than 50% of it, felt ill-prepared or not prepared at all to even use most of the technology in the classroom. That's our technology specialist that we have, not reading their own reports, and the board members that voted for it not acknowledging what was in the report. Or maybe they just overlooked that point. No, the iPad's not a success. Talking to teachers and some administrators, they can hardly get emails out someday, let alone function on some iPads. Yes, they increased their bandwidth. There's a lot more to an infrastructure, a technical infrastructure, than bandwidth. Lot more devices to consider. And when you introduce 3,000 new wireless devices without thinking about the throughput that that's going to accumulate, that's just bad all around. The parent portal, another technical, actually, great tool, that the teachers are having trouble keeping up on because of the bandwidth. Oh, we have tons of bandwidth, but we have too many devices and we can't support it. Now, it was alluded that our experts have determined that this was a great product. Well, I'm not going to tell you that they've been through three versions since that product was designed. Yes, it runs iOS 8, but no, what you are wrong about is, it doesn't have the most apps capable for this. It does not, because Apple limits their developers to only Apple-approved developers. So, you're limiting our possibilities, and you're cornholing us into specifically priced items, higher than what may come from a private developer, a smaller developer. But you would never know this because your board members aren't using technical consultation. They're not using an expert technical team without professional development. From what I hear, they're just dispatchers. Technical needs aren't being addressed. And that's something that I would provide oversight to.
Thank you.
I can't manage it directly, but I would hope that my skills and knowledge would somehow roll into the schools.
Okay, this question is for Mr. Dunn. You often speak out about keeping politics out of the Board of Education. Your signs state "paid for by township committee." Can you explain this committee, and is it a political organization?
Is that referring to me?
Yes, I'm sorry. I said, the question is for Mr. Dunn.
Well, quite frankly, that question is erroneous. No one has paid for my signs. No township committee. I'm not part of the Republican Party or the Democratic Party. So, no one has paid for my signs. So, if someone's spewing misinformation up here just to say, hey, Rich Dunn is politically elevated, that is wrong.
You say "paid by candidate."
It says "paid by candidate." I've seen other candidate signs paid by the Republican Party. So, I'm not sure where this question's coming from. Thank you.
Okay, this question is for all candidates, and we're going to begin with Donna Andriani. We have had school tax increases of 3.68% two years ago and 2% last year despite decreasing enrollment. Both town and county increases have been around 1/2% percent. Do you think the Board of Education should have done better?
We should always do better. With that said, you just picked out the last two years. Let's go back four or five. First year I was on the board, we had a zero tax levy increase, but our property taxes went up. Had nothing to do with the Board of Ed. Year number two that I was on the board, zero tax increase, tax levy. Property taxes still went up. Had nothing to do with the Board. So, yes, the last two years, we did have an increase. One of those years was a rebound year because of the fact the Board decided, upon advice, and we followed the advice, was to give back 1.1-plus million dollars for tax relief. When we did that, then we were short, shouldn't say it that way. All of our projections changed because of security issues, more than, as the major issue. What happened was, no one had anticipated the horrific tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Connecticut. With that, every district in the United States needed to reevaluate, shore up, improve, enhance the security of the buildings because nobody wants that phone call. So, over a million dollars went into security. That was one of the reasons that the tax, our tax levy went up. As far as last year's concerned, same thing, two years. So, over the six years that I've been on, we've had a 3.68, a 2% increase, three zero, and one give-back of 1.1 million. I think we do a pretty good job of taking care of providing a good... You're beeping me. Let me just finish. Of providing a good quality education for our children.
That's an automatic beeper. I wasn't beeping you. And I just want to remind everybody that these questions are handed to me by the people in the audience.
So, you know, I don't have the numbers on the budgets. I was not part of the budget process. But I know, as somebody who would go to the meetings and understand it, that the security was a huge expense. We could not plan that horrific tragedy. And that is something we must pay for, and we have to pay for, because there is nothing more important than our children's security. So, you can't add that number of people to the district without incurring some cost. It's a service-based industry. You can compare it to the town, but you have to remember, the town can make revenues. The school district can't. We can't make revenues. We can't charge for services. So, there's limitations that the board budget has that the town budget does not have. So, I can't speak to why certain decisions were made. I certainly understand the added expense for security and, for the one time, some of the costs for kindergarten, which I think make us a better educational system and just improves the lives for all of our children. So, that being said, also, you always do look for some ways to save it, but you never, ever, ever cut costs at the expense of our children.
Taxes, 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 taxes. The tax levy in Old Bridge is, for the Board of Education, is roughly $90 million a year. That's how much the Board of Education asks from the public to fund the school system. Now, last year, we had a 2% increase. 2013, it was 3.68% increase. And then 2012, we actually gave back 1.1 million to the residents of Old Bridge. People forget that. People who are running for the Board will throw that to the side and never mention that the Board of Education decided to give back 1.1 million. That's unheard of. We felt compelled to do so. So, over the three-year period of time, we actually asked for less money than what our opponents are saying. So, what we need to remember is, we've got to look at comparable school districts. In 2014, East Brunswick, East Brunswick School District had a 2.8% increase. And their tax levy on their citizens is $116 million compared to us, $90 million. And they've got 500 less students. So, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think that the Board of Education does a very good job in balancing the needs of the children to provide the finest and quality education and balancing the fact that we have fiduciary responsibility to protect the taxpayer. I think we're doing a fabulous job. Yes, back in 2013, we needed a 3.68% because the year before, we gave back $1.1 million. And in that $3.6 million, we had the security initiative, which was beyond our control. Also, we had a large increase in benefits for employees, and plus, our utility costs had risen. And there was other factors in that as well. So, when we develop a budget, we go into session, we talk, we come up with numbers. We, as a group, voted. And I believe the vote was seven to two, or six to three, for 3.68%. So, there's always a faction that's always against the budget. Every year, there's a faction against the budget, no matter what we do. And I always say that's political ideology. Always against an increase, regardless if it's 1%, 1.5%, 1.5%. There's always the no. So, please, we are doing our job. We're doing our due diligence. We're in the business of giving quality education, and that's what we're doing. A fair balance. Fiduciary responsibility as a board member, to make sure we spend it wisely, and to give the best and finest education.
I don't live in East Brunswick. I live in Old Bridge. And of the 14 budgets that I voted on, I only voted down the last two because I felt, as I stated earlier, that the board has not taken a lot of things into consideration. The economy, our tax base is driven, has been driven historically by new home construction. That market died in 2007. We've lost tax ratables, which means, that's why you get a tax increase, even though the board doesn't raise a rate, as Donna alluded to, when it went to 0%. Because they're allowed to collect the same amount of money they did with less ratables, so the rate has to go up to compensate for what the loss is. So, you saw increases there. But that's a fact of life in Old Bridge. And new housing is still very soft and probably will remain so for the next five years. Fortunately, we've picked up some other ratables, but we're generally a bedroom community, and that's where our ratables come from. Bottom line is, we have a lot of families that are struggling economically. We've got a lot of foreclosures, and it's not just unique to Old Bridge. It's all throughout the country. And New Jersey is one of the harder-hit states as well. My point is, the security's necessary. You paid for it. It's a million dollars. Yes, $90 million comes from local taxpayers, but you've got $150 million budget between state aid and federal aid. So, it's 1 million against 150 million. That's 6/10ths of 1% for the security portion of it. I'm saying we haven't done, as a board, haven't done enough due diligence to hold the other costs down. I'm not saying there should be no increase, but I don't believe it should have been 3.68 or 2 last year. And that's why I voted down those two out of the 14 I voted for.
I manage budgets. It's not an easy task. You always feel like you're robbing from Peter to Pay Paul, and it's a juggling act. But when you're in the times we're in now, where there are a lot of families struggling, you need to be more mindful with what you do with their money. That's the bottom line. Everything's grandeur when you're spending someone else's money. Everything's for the children when you're haphazardly making decisions. And I say haphazardly because, for instance, Donna mentioned earlier that we were able to pay for the kindergarten program because of the enrollment numbers going down. Okay? Well, kindergarten program increased our enrollment numbers, and those kids are going to go up. Are we planning ahead? Are we considering those factors? What's going to happen then? I don't feel that a lot of the decisions the board is making when it comes to finances is considering down the road. They're considering, what is it going to do for us now? There's always a return on investment. And it was mentioned before that this is not a business. It is a business. And our business is making sure we produce a great product for our children. But we also have a responsibility to our shareholders, which are the residents of Old Bridge. We need to make sure we make wiser decisions. And we have to stop moving in haste just for the namesake of what the project is. We need to acknowledge the people that are really doing the work, the teachers that are taking their supplies from home to fill their classroom, the parents that are filling out these ridiculous supply lists every year just to stock the classes, the PTAs that are, God knows how they come up with their events every single time and make them successful, all because the school isn't making the best decisions to support every facet. Thank you.
That year when we had the increase, I think safety was the foremost objective on all that. That year, it had a huge expense, and we had to deal with it. But if you would have planned better in the past, possibly, we could have helped out in the future. We have an aging population. That is the largest way that we get revenue for the town. And we need to do a better job on helping those seniors when they have a fixed income because their 2% raise in their taxes for the $160,000 and $200 and something dollars a year is a huge amount of money for them. We need to do a better job on planning, and that would give the teachers a lot more supplies and a lot more tools that they need.
Thank you. We're going to make this the last question. Two parts directed to all candidates. What experience do you have that makes you an ideal, or would make you an ideal Board of Education member? And if elected to the Board, what do you personally bring to the Board that would be beneficial to moving this district forward? And we're going to start with Kelly Foster.
Okay, so thanks. So, what experience do I bring? So, I think, as I said in my opening statement, I think some of my business skills are very important as we talk about planning, as we talk about looking at complex issues, as we look at how do we do due diligence. And also, how do you work together to get things done? How do you take out personal opinions? How do you take out negativity? How do you work openly and collaboratively? That's what you need to do. And I do that at work. You have to do that in work. You don't, doesn't matter what personal opinions you might carry. You have to act as professionals. And I think, I know I do that. But I also think I look at things in a different way. I think we look at not only how things affect us, but of the children. When you do analysis of certain projects, you don't do it just in a bubble. You bring in those people who are going to work with it. You bring in students. You bring in teachers. You bring in the parents. You bring in the lunchroom. You bring in the bus drivers. Everybody who touches our students need to be involved in the decisions. So, I think that's something I would bring to, into the Board. I think, in addition to that, I'm a parent. I understand everybody's needs. I understand what it's like when your child leaves that door in the morning, and you make sure they come home at the end of the day. That's our ultimate, that's our ultimate goal. That's what we're here for. So, I think, understanding what it is like to be a parent, what it is like to have a child who's in the school system, what are the challenges that all of our children face regardless of if they're in a gifted and talented program or if they're in a special needs. So, I think my ability to collaborate, to listen, to work with other people will be something that I can bring to the Board.
Based upon my well-rounded character and abilities, I believe I would be the perfect Board member. I'm a Vice President of Operations for a $4 billion corporation. I deal with budgets in excess of $200 million. I understand how to balance a budget. I understand how to spend money. And you know what? I would bring in the private and public sectors and work with them together, and that's what I have done here on the Board of Education. We need to have collaboration with the outside to make things better. We went into a direction where we went to a corporation that we don't have to put out forbid certain things. And we went that direction because it would save us money in the long run. But overall, based upon me being well-rounded, I think I would be one of the better Board members because I follow the leadership model. I don't back down. I stand on my principles. I give you my word. My word is solid. I don't change my mind. And there's been board members who would say one thing, and then all of a sudden, next meeting, change their mind. Why would they change their mind? They gave you your word. So, leadership is an excellent quality which I have, from being a Vice President of Operations in the private industry. I was an education major in college. I taught for a very short period of time, history, secondary education. So, I know what teachers go through. I'm married to a teacher. I'm a fire service line officer. I put my life on the line every day for this community, and I would do the same no matter what, and I would spend the time with the Board of Education regardless of what I'm doing on the outside with my extracurricular fire department activities. This is my life. My life is my family, my profession, the school board, and the fire department. That's all I give my time to. And quite frankly, I believe being a father of two has also given me the experience and the abilities to be a fine Board member, understanding what they're going through, understanding what they're going through in school with their peers. So, remember, vote... So remember, vote Rich Dunn, number three, come number four. Thank you.
As I said earlier, I got involved as a parent starting in 1986, and here we are some 27 years later, 28 years later. During that period of time, I first served on the board in 1993, and I'm in my 14th year of service since then. I think I bring a wealth of experience, knowledge of the district. I also did, for 15 years, the in-house demographics for the Long Range Planning Committee. I'm not a professional demographer, but I do have an aptitude for statistics and math skills, and those things were 95% accurate all the way throughout against any professional that had done it, saving us a lot of money and getting us pointed in the right direction for the referendum. I think as we go forward and things need to change in this district, for example, we only have two elementary schools that are air-conditioned, and we wind up sending kids home on heat days and lose an awful lot of instructional time, starting in May, going all the way through the end of June. I'd like to see a long-range development plan to remediate those things so that we don't lose that instructional time, which is so important to our kids, particularly under the core curricula standards and all the other issues. I worked and advocated for to extend the school year, and as unpopular as that may be, we were only having 180 instructional days, which is a statement, and when many districts around us were having 183 and 184. Most Pacific Rim countries and European countries send their students between 195 and 215 days a year. They spend a lot more time on task, which is probably why they're doing a lot better than we are. So that's the experience level I bring to the board, and I hope to use that same experience over the next three years to make this a better place for students and for taxpayers.
I think I've said enough tonight that I'm a technologist. And I can go on and tell you that I've managed the technical operations of 72 remote locations for a Fortune 500 company. I can go on and tell you that I was a supervisor for Rutgers University's digital classroom support, so I know what it means to have technical needs within the classroom. I can go on and tell you that I've managed operations for warehouses, I've balanced budgets, I've managed P and L, I've, so I can tell you all that, but the bottom line is, is if we're not listening to the people that are on our front line, our teachers, our parents, our administrators, and we're not making the best decisions for our residents, all my experience means nothing. So what I bring is my ears, my ability to listen, and my mouth, which my wife will tell you, will not stop once I get a thought in my mind. I will fight for what's right, and I won't back down, just like Rich. I'm a firefighter. I don't think we know what it means to back down. We run forward when everybody else is running back. So I just want the opportunity to fight for those that I see, when I come here, sitting in the back, just upset. I want the opportunity to fight for my children. I said it before, I'm fully invested in the success of this district, fully invested. No clouds, no doubt, I'm not going anywhere, and I need to make sure that my children have the advantage. And there's no reason why I wouldn't fight for everybody else's children as well. Thank you.
I think my job history, my career on Wall Street, has a lot to say on the person who I am. I started off in 1988 working on the floor of the American Stock Exchange as a reporter. Many people not, might not realize what this is, but ask a friend who worked on Wall Street. It's the lowest-level entry job there is. I worked my way up to a clerk, to a head clerk. I got, I got a job on the New York Stock Exchange. I ended up working for the owner of a company on the New York Stock Exchange. I traded hundreds of millions of dollars of his stocks. That shows on how much I strove. I self-educated myself, and I was willing to change my mind when I learned from my mistakes or learned, or got information. I think in any job, whether it's on the floor of the New York Stock Exchange or the Board of Education in Old Bridge, you need to be willing to change your mind after you get I was laid off in 2007, and I'm very proud to say that my wife and I live paycheck to paycheck now. And I'm going to bring that same approach going to the board. It's not because my son doesn't like football or he doesn't play football, we shouldn't build a concession stand. It's not because my daughter doesn't play instruments, we shouldn't buy new instruments. Maybe because we just don't have the money, and we should save it and bank it for the next year. I think I would be a great asset to the board. I volunteered in the town, and I love this town. I'm number six on the ballot. Thank you very much.
I believe in positives. We have so many great things that are happening in here. There's always room for improvement. There's always room for flexibility. There's always room to change. But we need to be a progressive educational district. I have a doctorate in curriculum and instruction. I have vast amount of experience in learning strategies, more so than anybody else, either running, sitting, or in the district. I have years of experience at the point of service of delivery of instruction in the classroom. I have empathy, I have understanding of struggling students, of struggling teachers, and I know what makes a classroom click. Being positive, being in an environment where it's a pleasure to be at provides the opportunity for success of learning. I bring to you a positive atmosphere, the cheerleader for the district. I critically listen. You all know that I ask a million questions, and if anybody has ever contacted me with any concern, it was either passed along to the right person, but I also followed up to make sure that you had a resolution. I think that I've done a great job on my years of service at the board. There's a lot of things that the public does not see. That certainly opens your eyes once you sit up here. And decisions are not as easy as they seem to be while you're sitting in the audience. I appreciate the time that I have been of service to the district, and I would certainly like to continue in that vein. Thank you.
Okay, that was our last question, just a few thank yous. I would like to thank the volunteers at the table who are handed the question from members of the public. Unfortunately, they do not have time to check the facts on the questions, only to make sure the handwriting's legible so I don't fumble and that the questions are not duplicative. I want to thank Mr. Gudzuski and Ms. Walsh and the student TV crew for being here with us tonight and on Monday when we did the interviews. And I want to thank the candidates for taking the time to come out and address the issues and thank the public. Again, thank you for joining us this evening. This program will be aired on cable channel 118 or Verizon Vios Channel 24, along with the one-on-one interviews with each candidate that were recorded earlier this week. Please remember to cast your ballot on Election Day, Tuesday, November 4. Thank you.